Oh, well.
Oh, well.
Good evening. It is 5:30, so we're going to call the regular council meeting to order. I'd remind you to turn your cellphones to silent or vibrate, and then let's please all stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Amanda, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Strebe?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Items on the consent agenda. Minutes from regular meeting number 34 on October 18th, and special meeting number 35 on October 25th, 2016 is presented. Appointment of Melissa Hecker to the position of full-time transit driver effective November 7th, 2016. Resolution number 252, 2016, naming depositories for the city of Etomo, Iowa. Resolution number 258, 2016, terminating the lease of city-owned property located at $222,000 to Patricia Stewart. Beer and liquor applications for Club 888, 123 West 3rd Street, Easton Tavern, 1141 Orchard Street, Veterans in Foreign Wars, number 775, 702 West Main Street, Mexico Lindo, 530 West 2nd Street, Casey's General Store, number 2208, 1603 West 2nd, Stop &amp; Go Drive-Thru in Delhi, 516 South Madison, Benchwarmers Eatery and Sports Lounge, 2209 Romer with outdoor service area. All applications pending final inspections.
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Item C, we need an approval for tonight's agenda. Is there such motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Before we move into the reports, I want to remind if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak to the council tonight to fill out a sheet with your name and the item you want to talk about, and give that to one of our staff and bring it up to the table here. Okay, item D, the reports from city officers. I'd like to ask city administrator Andy Morris to make some comments. He's going to go through a number of items, so Andy, you have the floor.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. The very first one you see is information update regarding the roundabouts and some of the funding that was in place for the roundabouts. Would like Larry Seals, if it's all right with the council, for him to step forward and provide an update on this project for us.
Go ahead, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor, council. As you know, we submitted for three separate intersections under the roundabout grant program. These grants were set supposed to be for specific intersections with a funding limit for each. They went through the selection process, that's the DOT selection committee. They recommended, or what they're willing to award to us, is Albia Road at $500,000, but they include Richmond as part of that intersection. They're saying they're one unit and they function together, which they do. We just put together some real quick notes to cover that. And again, if you go to the second slide, it lists the amount that they are going to fund and just kind of the display that we had given you back when we submitted the grant. If you go to the third page, we revised the estimates slightly. We know that the consulting engineer that put together the original presentation had a little bit higher numbers than expected. We think that there are some opportunities to save some money. Part of that would be a local letting versus, just let them locally would help with the unit price costs. Some in-house design for the Richmond intersection or roundabout, that would be allowed after working with the DOT and running that through the chain of command. What you would see is the city's responsibility would grow if we did this because we did not receive any of the funding. Under the original thought, the way the program was laid out, Richmond would be paid 100%. Since they combined the two intersections into one, we just got the max for one intersection. If you look at the cost of what it would cost to replace that existing signal, it's estimated somewhere in $175,000 ballpark, then the city would still have another 211 on top of that in order to do this project. So I guess with that, they're going to make a selection on November 8th. Is that a project that council would still like to pursue?
Mr. Mayor and council, one of the items, as Mr. Seals has pointed out, some of the funding opportunities in terms of the grant monies are a little bit less than what was anticipated, I think, in our initial discussions. And we've had some discussions with council members as to proceeding forward with the project. I know Larry and I have talked rather extensively, even with an exposure that is certainly a little north of $200,000, something we would want to still pursue. To that end, it may be beneficial to talk a little bit about some other funding opportunities at this time and how we might, quite frankly, reduce our cost overall endemic to the project.
Yeah, one of the things, and I did forget to mention that, was we had originally, through the consultant firm, identified U-Step as a possible funding source. As we got into that grant deeper, that is on primary systems or their extension. That four lane, although it looks like an extension, is not an extension of the primary system, so that funding source is not available for that intersection. We looked at several different funding sources for clean air attainment. When we looked at the amount of funds that would be available for this intersection and the amount of studies and engineering that goes in to document the savings and what you actually gain by doing that project, we figured it was a wash on the funds, so we don't recommend using that type of clean entertainment funds. So really, we're looking at $386,000 if we want to do it. And that's all just estimates. And again, I know the estimates are high. There is some benefits. We will not have traffic signals at Albia Road, and I am a fan of eliminating them whenever possible just because of their ongoing maintenance throughout the life of the signal, where a roundabout has really no maintenance other than signage.
Mr. Mayor, one last comment if I may, and that's to point out the timeframe. This is not something that has a definitive date. We're bringing this, I think Larry's fair to say, well in advance of the period of time, anyway, the construction would begin. Is there a delineation, though, in terms of when council needs to make a definitive decision on this?
Well, as far as the selection board, they're going to make their recommendation on the 8th, and then it moves forth, I think it was December 14th, before they make a final selection. Probably would like to have an answer by then. I really don't want to accept a grant and then later on decide we don't want to do the project and turn it back in just because we might want to go back to the same board in the future that handles this funding source. I mean, we're still looking at other options, but I'm not going to sit here and guarantee anything until I know that we qualify for.
So are there any other council comments? I think Larry's looking for direction, and it sounds like recommendation is to proceed.
I'm always in favor if you get 50 cents on the dollar, but it is a lot of money. It is, it would be a great improvement in that area.
Larry, you talked about some potential savings of doing some of this design in-house. We talked about that. Would you venture to even guess, and I know that puts you in a pretty hard spot at this point, any kind of amount that might be taken off that for doing some of that work in-house?
I'd want to sit down with the unit prices and look at them, and then, I haven't had time to do that.
Thank you.
I assume that you probably are going to have the same answer for me. We had discussed the difference of diverting traffic versus not diverting traffic. Have you put any numbers to that?
Haven't had the opportunity yet.
Thank you.
So Andy, are you comfortable with working with Larry and coming up with some additional figures down the road, but we need to...
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with council, we would ask for authorization to staff to proceed, looking at the numbers that are related to this project. Again, we have a deadline that is pending, and all items being equal, we would like to at least proceed with the application.
And we have identified a funding source. If we felt that we needed to go through, we would add it to fall bonding action.
No, and that's just an information piece. We just want to get a sense from council. We're not asking for a vote, but if it's all right, by consensus, anyway, staff would proceed on this if that's all right with council. No votes, though.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, let's go ahead and have the staff submit the final request and see what happens, and then bring back, you'd bring back the contract figures, anyway, so.
Well, there wouldn't be any contract figures as far as actual letting. They don't release the funds till July 1st of next year. And I mean, you'd have to do the design and go through the letting process to actually have construction numbers.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Larry. Andy, you're still up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next item you'll see is meeting with HDR Engineering. That tentative meeting is planned for the end of this month, as you can see, November 29th. And what that would amount to, and I know some of the council members can speak to this as well, Councilman Dalby is certainly familiar with this, as you are as well, Mayor, but the city is exploring opportunities to expand plant capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. And obviously, there are some environmental concerns as well the city's trying to address. I know that at, as a pre-meeting, staff is going to hold a meeting with representatives of HDR, which will include Mr. Seals, Mr. Reeves, and myself, and likely yourself, Mayor, to, quite frankly, lay the groundwork for that meeting that takes place on the 29th. Mr. Mayor, if you have anything to add to that discussion, I'll defer to you.
I think that's a good summary, Andy. Thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, all right. Andy, want to give us an update on Buxton, please?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and council, let you know, on the Buxton report, you will recall that the council did sign a contract for retail services with the Buxton Group. There are a couple of items that have taken place. One of them is they've offered a list to the city conveying, based on their analytics and study, the top 20 retail matches for the city. And this is something that they're asking for advice and consent, perhaps changes to that if council deems necessary. But these are based on certain analytics. So all items being equal, again, I'm not looking for a vote, but the sooner I can get back with the representatives of the Buxton Group, the sooner we can move on this. If council members have retail entities that are outside of that list, that does not mean that they will not be pursued. We will, quite frankly, address them as a one-off, or as they come about, if council feels that way. But I have shared that list with council. I need to be careful about keeping that list with us, because if we do share that, quite frankly, with some other outside entities, there are some other communities that could, quite frankly, take this service for free and start recruiting on our behalf, so we don't want that. Certainly, if council members have any questions about that, I'd be happy to take them at this time or in the future, but I would like to move on this as quickly as possible if it's all right with council.
Okay.
Consent is all right on that one. Then, Mayor, the next one you would see listed the dog license. That's an item that we have discussed. I know I'm going to refer to the city attorney, Ms. Keith, at this point to talk about the differences between the fee schedule and also separate some of the rules and regulations we're enhancing.
Tonight, you will be voting on the proposed second reading of the animal ordinance as part of that review with Chief McAndrew, Officer Jeff Williams, and Councilman Mark Rowe. The, there was discussion that we should consider increasing the license fee for unspayed dogs to $25. So it would be $5 if the animal was spayed, and it would be $25 if the animal was not spayed. And the hope was that would generate or encourage citizens to make sure their dog is spayed or neutered. So that is not before the council for a vote tonight. It's just the general changes in the animal ordinance. We will be bringing back to you a separate resolution on the 15th of November dealing with just the issue of that dog license as a separate item. So just wanted to make sure that was there, and then you can vote it up or down on the 15th. But tonight is just the animal ordinance changes, and that resolution does not affect the ordinance itself.
Is that clear to everybody? Okay, very good. Thank you, Joni. Andy, do you want to make any other comments?
I don't have anything else on that, Mayor. Again, kudos to Ms. Keith and also Officer Williams and Councilman Rowe for updating this ordinance for us. The other item you see is review of the city of Etomo's fleet of vehicles. Larry Seals is with us tonight. Would like for Larry to give an overview of how this fleet committee works. In addition to, quite frankly, keeping a census of those, I feel, anyway, they do a very good job also of identifying those vehicles that need to replace and those that do not. So if it's all right with the council, I would turn it over to Mr. Seals at this time.
Go ahead, Larry.
What we've done is, we've got a committee that was set up some years ago. It consists of different members throughout the city. They meet on occasion to review specifications, needs of each individual department as far as type of equipment, size of equipment. In conjunction, that's, we're represented by our maintenance division that takes care of the fleet. We do everything based on past performance. Each equipment is signed to replacement year estimate. As we get toward the end of its useful life or service life, it is evaluated. We look at many different items. The committee is charged with trying to extend that useful life as long as we can for we get and maximize our investment out of that capital. I would like to point out, there's 22 separate departments that have equipment that's included in the fleet. I did give you a spreadsheet earlier by department, and what we did was we went back and we looked at what did they have roughly in 2007, some of them's 2008. But we tried to do roughly a 10-year period to show what they had at that time, what they currently have. I know that sometimes citizens will drive by certain departments and they'll see a number of vehicles that are either setting or what they assume has not moved for some time. Typically, they just simply don't see the operation of these vehicles. I would like to point out, there's, in those 22 departments, there's 319 pieces of vehicle that the maintenance crew maintains, and then there's quite a few small things that are not considered as far as a fleet numbered. You know, that's the small equipment that might be patch boxes, trailers, snowplows, small generators, quicksaws, sweepers. There's all kinds of things. It's just the small equipment. And that's the real overview. Part of this department, I guess, what we look at in the budgeting process, we'll just pick one piece of equipment if it's on a 10-year replacement cycle, and we'll just use round numbers if we know it's $20,000. That's one of the things that through the finance department, that Bob makes sure that we escrow that money into account, for at the end of that useful life, we have money to buy that equipment again. That prevents us from having to go out and bond for that equipment every time, every year. And on the finance side, Bob would be a lot better at explaining how that part of it works. I think you can see what we did was just pick out some of the miles driven per year. That's part of the thing we also do. We'll look at departments as their duties change over time. We went back to some, and we look at, okay, that equipment hasn't been used in five years. What has changed? Is that a contract item now? Do you use different equipment? At that part, or at that point, we would take that equipment and either reassign it to another department, which also happens frequently. You know, if you have a department that needs a piece of equipment, but it's infrequently used, sometimes we'll take some that are getting closer to the end of their service life, transfer it to that department. They might get an additional five years out of it instead of having to buy a new piece that has the total capital price in the beginning. So everything's balanced over time. And again, like I said, we've got a good committee. We meet as necessary. It seems to work very well. The mechanics experience comes into play where they have seen enough years, enough years' experience between all of them, that we avoid buying equipment that becomes high-maintenance items. That's a real short overview, trying to keep within my three minutes.
I don't have anything else, Mayor, unless council members have questions or comments.
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Number one, a comment. I think the fleet committee that the city has established several years ago is wonderful. It really keeps a handle on the fleet, the usage, and it's just great. My question early on was, and I'm one of those that noticed this, and somebody brought it to my attention, so I looked for myself. As I drive through one of the parking lots for the fleet of City Hall vehicles, I counted 17, I believe, and that's for health and inspections, planning and zoning, engineering. I think that's about it here. My question simply was, are some of those hold over that, held over that was never, that they never used? Do they have too many? Do they have enough? And then I drove through the PD parking lot one Sunday, and I counted 15 squad cars, and I know there's probably some take-home, maybe some take-home vehicles there. I'm not real sure in the police department. I know in engineering, there's a couple of take-home vehicles that weren't counted in that. My question is simply this. Could the department heads go through their list and determine if all of these vehicles are needed? I don't know, and I just think it would be nice to know if all of these are needed.
Skip, that's one of the things we do. I kind of just briefly glanced over one of the departments where we went back. I think there was three pieces of equipment that had basically reached the end of their service life. They, and this is an outer department, we still own the equipment, but it's a contract managed department. We ended up looking at that. One of the pieces of equipment was transferred to the Parks Department. A couple of the pieces went to auction. So we do do that frequently. One of the things that I know you pointed out, since you specifically mentioned the police department, when you look at that, we went back to 2007. At that time, they had 19 vehicles. And remember, there's an overlap from the time they purchased their new vehicles until the time those squad cars go to auction. So there's a little bit of fluctuation. So you have to look at, how many do they have? How many is staged to go to auction? In Tom's fleet, for instance, there's two that's went to auction. There's two more that's going to auction. So there is some overlap, so you will have some fluctuation where, at, I guess, full need, he'll have 17 vehicles. As two come in, then two leave, so there'll be a time he has 19 before the old two will go back. So there's some of that overlap that people see, and I do realize, and Tom can explain how those are used on shifts. He did a very good job. It's attached to the back of your packet as far as what's patrol. I mean, he's got everything listed. So if you have specific questions on these outlined departments, we could have them come up and answer them directly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. That's a good summary, and I want to, again, compliment former employee Donnie Sanders, who helped put some of this together and really has some data on usage and hours on the machines and mileage and repair schedule, so you know if you have a limit in the group, too, which I think is...
Right, and that's the other thing, and that's one of the things we did probably a year, a year and a half ago, is we went through some of the outlined departments that do part of their own maintenance, and we adopted all of the paperwork that we use at the garage. That comes in and is very important when you do your evaluation. Let's say your vehicle has a 10-year scheduled replacement life. A lot of times, I'll use a truck from engineering. We purchased this '99. It's the first vehicle we bought new. Prior to that, we always got squad cars that were handed to us, typically $100,000 to $120,000. We tracked our maintenance, and we looked at how much maintenance we had on those vehicles, plus they have a little bit lower gas mileage, depending on, you know, full-size Crown Vic. We ended up keeping that truck 17 years. It is just now being replaced, even though it was originally put on a 10-year schedule. That's where each year we look at, all right, here's our repair history. And that's what makes our maintenance division kind of shine and really perform well as far as the finances for the city and the taxpayers. I think that speaks a lot to how the equipment is used.
Very good. Okay, Andy, anything else for the...
I don't have anything else, Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Seals taking his time. I don't have anything else. Unless council members have ongoing questions, please let us know.
Okay, item E. Is there anyone in the audience? We have a number of slips here, and if you haven't filled one out, we'll call you up at the time that the item is being discussed. So sit tight for just a minute. We'll move on to department recommendations and reports. So, item S.
Award the Engineering Services Agreement for Wastewater Rate Study to Beanster &amp; Kim Incorporated. Recommendation: Award the Engineering Services Agreement for Wastewater Rate Study to Beanster &amp; Kim Incorporated, the amount of $6,976.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Larry, you're up. You have the floor, and I think we want to make a correction in the amount.
Yeah, we do on the agenda.
Yeah.
It's correct in the staff summary and on the contract proposal. As with any enterprise fund, rates need to be reviewed in set time, onset time intervals or when major events occur. In our case, it has been over nine years since a comprehensive review has been conducted, and a significant commercial user has installed a wastewater pretreatment unit which became operational July 2016. While the installation of the much-needed pretreatment unit has benefited the city by freeing up load capacity, it has reduced our overall revenue. In order to calculate sewer rates, staff will review existing expenses, which include and are not limited to actual O&amp;M, cost for the wastewater plant, daily operation, the collection system maintenance, capital funding, debt service, the projected construction projects that are listed in the CSO compliance schedule. Other items that have to be considered are pending DNR and EPA regulations and the estimated cost of their implementation. Under the study, key items reviewed are, again, the revenue, rate structures, capital funding, bonds and loans, usage fees, and rate trends. In conjunction with the rate review, a financial performa will be developed as a second phase of the project under a second proposal. This would be paid for from the sewer fund balance. It is in the amount of $16,976.
I think before we proceed, Larry, we promptly ought to amend the motion because we went with the amount that was on the agenda, which is a typo error. The actual amount, as you said, is in the staff summary, is $16,976, so would the... Yeah, I would offer that as an amendment. Thank you, Bob.
And I would second that.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, now, Larry, are there any comments, questions, or...
One of the early questions I had, we looked today, we put together what we could find through the ordinances with the help of the city clerk, and before you and attached to that packet was kind of the history back to '91 on the rates. As you can see, one of the things that are, that should be done is systematic rates to make sure that you don't have large periods of time, that you do no rate increases, and then when you wait five or six years, you have to play catch-up. The last time that I was involved with this in the 2007, in the 2007 rate study, we had seen five years of O&amp;M cost at the treatment plant go up 5%, and we hadn't raised our rates. So that's sometimes kind of gets you behind in the very beginning. That's why we want to do this study. We're going to lay it out and give all the options and look at it. And, I mean, basically, with any enterprise fund, you have certain expenses that you simply have. You know, the cost of the operation of the plant, the labor involved, the collection system, all the mandates that's been handed down over the last nine or 10 years. You simply have to do them. So you just calculate what revenue is it going to take to do it, and then you look at the users and you spread it out across the system.
Okay. Any questions for Larry? And I see you have somebody with you, Todd?
Yeah, Todd Penniston has been with us since some of the initial projects in 2006. If you have any specific questions, he's here to answer.
I guess mine's more towards the rates. I understand why people are hesitant to raise the rates on any sort of regular basis, but logic would tell you the cost is going to go up over time. So is there any reason behind not having some sort of periodic rate increase? behind not having some sort of periodic, uh, rate increases to help offset the additional costs that we have ongoing?
No, I, I think you should have some sort built into the rates to where, when you come back and if you set that at five years or 10 years, you're not playing catch-up for a long period of time. If you can tell, uh, on that spreadsheet that I handed out, uh, we're three and a half years since we've done a last rate increase. So by the time we go through the study phase and get it closed, we'll have skipped four years of rates.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Larry, I got a quick one here. It said, uh, it's been over nine years since we've done a comprehensive review, nine years. Uh, when was the last time we, you know, uh, started to look into doing a review? Did you say it was 2007?
That's when we done the large review, where we actually went out, we verified the number of users, we, uh, went through the entire system. Then we come back and if you look at it, we, we did increase, uh, three different times, uh, in, in 2012 was a couple, and I think it rolled into 13, uh, and I did put that in front of you. We just increased the commodity charge a small amount. One of the things under this study that we will do is bring back all the information. Uh, the, the thing that is key on this was how successful we were, we were with receiving grants and the percent that that actually decreased the rates or prevented us from having to raise the rates to cover that debt. Not only that, and, and working with Bob, we can pull out how much TIF money, how much lost funds, how much sales tax is what the loss is, uh, that we used on this project. And you will see that we really kept the rates down, uh, back in 2006 and 2007, when we first started this, you know, the DNR came at us saying we're going to do citywide separation. At that time, our first estimate was that'd be $160 million worth of work. Um, in today's dollars, it'd be a lot more than that. We've seen a lot of our unit prices continue to climb over the last nine-year period. So we were able to offset, I mean, in those numbers from that first study, our rates was going to be approximately 128 a month. We were able to cut that, uh, again, the 54 million worth of grants that we received, reduced our sewer rates 54%. Uh, and then we'd have to calculate in all of the other funding sources that we have used to get to that point. And that, that's part of the stuff we'll pull together as we're doing this, just for you can have that information in front of you.
Any other questions, Bob?
Yeah, Larry, um, and I, I might have been there during the period of the time of those rates, uh, increases, but it's partially, as you mentioned, there hadn't been raises for a period of time, and then we got caught to where it was a demand that we do it. Um, and I agree with Mark, I think that's the type of thing that if we can set up a schedule, uh, that people accept it a lot easier. Uh, my other question though was, now with pretreatments, with detention, retention, uh, might those factors lessen a little bit what we have to do, or, or would they have anything to do with it at all?
Well, pretreatment's going to reduce the total load on the plant, so you will reduce overall cost of some of the operations, uh, that occur at the plant. Uh, that'll be part of it. We're going to look at what is the current cost of operating it. I mean, if your solids go down, you're going to have less, uh, land application cost. I mean, all those things fluctuate, uh, there's no set model, and you just kind of have to look at averages and trends. That's one of the things we do with the rate trends. We'll look at all of those costs over time. And to back to your original question, the period from 99 through until, uh, June of 2005, there was no rate increases, so over five years, there was no rate. So when we did do one, then we had to play catch-up, and then there was a couple years in between, uh, from June of '05 till October of '07, again, no rates during that time period. Uh, so you do get behind because there are a lot of things that you simply cannot control. Uh, you cannot control utility costs, for instance, uh, chemical cost at the plant. You have, uh, you know, everybody that works here through the union contracts get an annual raise typically. Uh, those are all expenses that have to be accounted for somewhere, and in the rates in an enterprise, they cover all of those costs and expenses.
Well, in, in addition though, I guess I would recognize the fact that in 2006, '07, with DNR and all the demands and, and EPA, and the fact that V and K, Mr. and Kim, were on board with us at that time, um, while our citizenry was quite concerned about what we were doing, I think as the sewer separation models continued, it became a lot more acceptable, a lot more understanding. Thank you.
I think, uh, just to make a comment, uh, Todd, you do this all over the state of Iowa, so you have a pretty good handle on this process.
Yes, we do.
I, I've seen a couple of their reports for other cities, and I think it's something that, uh, I agree with the council, that we need to update and do more frequently so we don't have these big jumps, so...
That's correct.
Any other questions for staff?
One, I do want to add one thing, Mayor. Uh, one of the things that I, uh, continually hear from elected officials and, and just citizens in general, we will show what every other city has in the state, we'll compare ourselves rate-wise. We're unique, I mean, you really have to compare to other CSO communities, uh, when you're looking at the size and scope of the projects that we've undertaken for the last, basically, decade.
Okay. I'm sure you'll keep us aware of that as we go through that process.
It'll all be informational items for, you know, to be discussed.
Okay, ready for the, uh, motion was made to amend the original motion to correct the amount to being 16,976. So let's vote on the amendment first.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Okay, now the original motion to award the Engineering Service Agreement, uh, to Beanster and Kim.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Thank you, Larry.
This is the time, place, and date set by public hearing on the proposed development agreement between Quincy Station LLC and the City of Atumwa. I receive no objections on this item.
I think Joni, you're going to take the lead on this?
I think I am, Your Honor. The owner of the Quincy Plaza has marketed the former K-Bart building to, actually Hobby Lobby, uh, as an approved tenant, and also there would be an additional tenant in that building. Quincy Station LLC will be overseeing approximately $1.578 million in construction costs at that site. There will be approximately $448,000 in improvements to the exterior, common areas of the parking lot, asphalt, lighting, concrete, et cetera. The city has bonded to provide a reimbursement of up to $300,000 as an economic development grant for these exterior improvements to help entice Hobby Lobby or a similar retail tenant to locate in that building. The money will be placed in escrow with the bank as escrow agent, with one-tenth of the funds distributed to Quincy Station LLC each year, as long as the requirements of the development agreement are met, including having an approved tenant and lease agreement in place for 10 years, completing the exterior work required with adequate verification and proof of payment, and requiring the tenant to employ a certain minimum number of full-time employees. If the developer is in compliance each year of this agreement, one-tenth of the escrow funds will be distributed until the fund is depleted. Failure to meet these requirements will result in withholding the payment for that year and potentially the termination of the agreement. Copies of that agreement, as well as the escrow agreement, are placed in your packet for your review and requesting that, uh, those two agreements be approved.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this particular item, now's your chance to address the council. Okay, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 254, 2016, approving the development agreement between the City of Atumwa and Quincy Station LLC for an economic development grant of up to $300,000 for improvements at the Quincy Plaza, as well as a project escrow agreement for this grant. Recommendation: Pass and adopt, resolution number 254, 2016.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Any questions for Joni? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set by public hearing on the proposed ordinance number 3105, 2016, amending the code of ordinances, municipal code of the City of Atumwa, Iowa, by correcting the zoning classification on certain property located at 539 West Fourth Street from R4 to R5. I receive no objections on this item.
Good evening, Kevin. Kevin Flanagan, our senior planner, you have the floor.
Yes, this is in relation to an ongoing project that we have in the city on, uh, 539 West Fourth for a 52-unit workforce housing, uh, complex. And, uh, of course, as we have moving along this process, we, uh, had done some other things in prior meetings that we could do that were in anticipation of a tax credits application going in, but when it comes to the, uh, the zoning of classification of the property, it must be in place prior to the application going in. And what we found, it was as an R4, and, uh, there's a fairly broad dispensation between our R4s and our R5s. It is a two-acre piece of property, uh, but when you look at it, our, uh, R4 says 17 units per square acre. So in the end, uh, even with two acres, it wouldn't be quite enough for a 52-unit, uh, complex. So we looked to change it into an R5, which allows 43 units per acre. So with our 3s and our 4s and our 5s, there's some fairly odd jumps. Typically in a community our size, you'd see more R districts, maybe eight or 10 of those. So the dispensations would be a little smaller between those, and the specificity for those districts would be a little more true. Uh, with ours, we have an R3 that has a, a 12 unit and an R4 with a, a 17, and then you go all the way to 43 on R5. So that's why we're here tonight, is to go from an R4 to an R5 on this that would, uh, prior to our application deadline, which I think is the 15th of November. So, uh, that's why you see the waiving of the readings, uh, involved in this as well. So this is all in preparation for an application from our developer, um, and if we were to get those credits, of course, we'd proceed after that into, to our normal processes for, uh, developments that we see in the community. So we will find out about those tax credits around March, I think, is when they're awarded or allocated yearly. Um, the only caveat here being that we'd like to, and it comes with the, uh, planning commission's recommendation, was that we do this rezoning conditionally and say that this rezoning to an R5 stays in place for as long as, uh, uh, the developer maintains his purchase agreement, their purchase agreement with the property owner, um, or actually pursues the development or completes the development. Um, that way, if the, uh, if the developer decided to abandon this development for whatever reason and back away, then we would, uh, be coming to both the planning commission and to yourselves for another process, which would be to downzone it back to an R4. Um, we feel that this, uh, zoning goes along with this project. If we had another project on the site, of course, we may come back to the table later. And it may indeed be that we come back to the table on this development itself later because we may find that it's more advantageous to the development, um, because changes can happen when we get down into the nitty-gritty of, of, of planting a site out on dirt rather than on paper, right? So if that were to occur, we may end, end up doing this thing as a planned unit development, a PUD, allowing us a lot more variation in how we develop the site, and, uh, the two-acre minimum that we have in the city for a planned unit development is the case here. So, but right now, we want to get this thing, uh, true for the application and go to an R4 with those, that stipulation.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to address this particular item.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening.
Keith Cavanus, 2851 Oak Meadow Drive. Uh, I have one question in listening to the explanation, and I'm certainly in favor of development, but I wonder, is there any other ending feature, uh, other than the agreement with the person who's purchasing the ground with the landowner and the development continuing? I only think about St. Joseph Hospital being in a stagnant period of time, so could this be drug out for 10 years, or is there some term stated?
Okay, thank you, Keith. Kevin, you want to pick up on that, please?
I will, Your Honor, and that's a, that's a good question, and it's a tax credits application, so, uh, uh, these processes can go on for more than a year. The longest term that I've had on a tax credits application, uh, myself for a housing, uh, development, was three years. Took three different, uh, go, you know, run back to the, to the well kind of thing. It's a yearly cycle. Des Moines, lots of the big cities, they eat them up, they're going to get sick to cycle sometimes, and it, it knocks out some of the more rural communities such as ourselves, and that's tough, but, um, we've got some good indications with this development from the state, uh, with some conversations that have been going back and forth between our developer and the state. We look good for this app, and we're, uh, we're a community that hasn't put in a lot of apps in, in, in the last few, uh, years, and so, uh, I think we're, we're seeing some favor from the state on that level. They know the situation we're in with housing, I think they sympathize with that, they see us as a, as a regional leader, and they want, uh, they want to see developments in regional, uh, leadership spots, especially, uh, considering that we're sort of, uh, an urban island in a, in a rural sea where we're at, triangulated with Des Moines and Iowa City. So, uh, I, we don't anticipate this one going much over a year or two, but certainly in some of these cases, you'll see multiple apps go in for a few years there. Yes, and the developer in this case does have apps in at other communities as well, about maybe four of those, I think, for this cycle, so...
Okay. All right. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3105, 2016, amending the code of ordinances, municipal code of the City of Atumwa, Iowa, by correcting the zoning classification on certain property located at 539 West Fourth Street from R4 to R5. Recommendation A: Pass the first consideration of ordinance number 3105, 2016, contingent upon the property in question being under purchase contract with or actually owned outright by Landover Corporation for Development, after which the zoning district remains in place.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Yes, Mark?
Um, how, how will, if any, uh, what will be the impact on the neighboring properties of, of moving this, uh, zoning from R4 to R5?
There won't be a, a great impact, um, other than the development itself. Now, we do have, uh, one neighbor who had concerns, he's now in support of the project. There's an ongoing, uh, negotiation between that neighbor particularly and the, uh, developer over some easement concerns that we have on the site. There, uh, there's an easement that goes through the actual, uh, former school site itself, and there's a, a county piece of property there that we're, we're looking at needing an easement for him, and we're trying to kind of honest broker this thing. I, I have a meeting, um, on the 16th with the county to look at the county's, uh, uh, option of, uh, or, or question that we have to the county, will you place easement on property? And that's the property that, uh, Lot 21, that services, uh, the cell tower site. So it's a fairly short distance there, you can almost jump over it, uh, to get to, um, the property owner's site, uh, Mr. Hill. Um, he has been using that access for quite a few years, as have so many others in the community, but there's, uh, other than that, um, our, you know, our concerns, I, there's some things that we, I think are going to bring to the table on a public level if we get this tax credits and we move forward with the developer, because we do see that there's going to be, you know, with 52 units, where there's going to be a different, uh, kind of traffic situation on, on Atumwa, um, avenue there. So I, I think we're, and we've talked to the developer about that already in terms of, you know, what kind of, perhaps improvements, and that was some, one of the things that one of the homeowners in the area said as well. So there's some things we're going to have to attend to were we to get the credits. I guess we have to get to that point first before, see if there's, uh, feasibility or viability to the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, let's, uh, all the questions.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Recommendation B: Waive the second and third considerations, pass and adopt ordinance number 3105, 2016.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe? Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Resolution number 210, 2016, approving change order number two and accepting the work as final and complete for the Iowa Avenue Reconstruction Project, Highway 34 to Main Street. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 210, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Go ahead, Larry.
This project consisted of full-width, full-depth reconstruction of Iowa Avenue from Highway 34 to Main Street. The project also included new sanitary sewer, storm sewer, new water main, a center turn lane from Highway 34 to K Avenue. Change order two increases the contract amount by $54,889.87, for a total of about 2.5% over the base contract. Major items included in the change order was added traffic signal loops and wiring, contract quantity adjustments, which was largely accounted for on the Main Street intersection, pavement, and a lot of subbase failures along the old Hellier Electric Building. That area was probably half width, a couple hundred feet long. And I also listed all of the funding sources. So the new contract amount is $2,660,530.75.
Any questions for Larry?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Just a heads up again, Larry, on what a good job your department, your people did. That's another area that, for years, as any of us would travel it, it was not a pleasant venture. And wow, what an improvement. So thank you very much.
That was about a five-year process, trying to find different funding sources. Originally, we were going to repair just a short section of that. But we went through the Tiger Grant application a couple rounds. We were unsuccessful there, so we dropped back and looked at these funding sources.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Resolution number 228, 2016, approving the third amendment to the Agreement for Engineering, Design, and Management Costs between the City of Atumwa and Vinster and Kim for the 2010 Flood Protection Mitigation Project, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 228, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
This is the third amendment, increases the compensation by $36,412.66 for construction administration services, and increases compensation by $40,460.13 for construction observation and inspection services for this project. During the regular scheduled meeting of July 19th, 2016, Representatives of Vinster and Kim updated city councils on the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program with Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Division for the 2010 Flood Mitigation Project. They provided an overview and the breakdown of cost and completion dates on each of the four contracts associated with this project. This project, we were very successful in getting that time extended over a year or right at a year. That is one of the things that increased the hours required to do the construction observation. On the back, you see that the total cost of the new contract amount for engineering services paid to date.
Are there any questions for Larry? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Resolution number 249, 2016, authorizing the mayor to enter into an Iowa Code Chapter 28E, 28D agreement between the City of Atumwa and the Counties of Davis, Keakuck, Van Buren, and Wapalo, and the City of Sigourney for continued creation of the entity known as the Southeast Iowa Interagency Drug Task Force. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 249, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Good evening, Chief. You have the floor.
Good evening. The Southeast Iowa Interagency Drug Task Force was created in 1990 for the purpose of implementing joint and/or cooperative action in the party's drug law investigation, enforcement, and prosecution efforts. The last 28E agreement was signed in 1998. The agreement will bring it up to date with the current membership and addresses, procedures, liability, expenses, and other issues.
Any questions for the chief? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Resolution number 256, 2016, directing a sale of $1,400,000, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, general obligation bonds, Series 2016A. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 256, 2016.
A motion.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Good evening, Bob.
Good evening, Your Honor, and thank you. I'm just going to cut to the chase here, and I want to introduce Larry Berger from Spear Financial, who conducted the sale of our bonds today, and he can take it from there.
Thank you, Bob, Mayor, Council, Larry Berger, Spear Financial. And we continue to have an exceptional bond market out there, 50- to 60-year low. So what I'd like to do is you did have, handed out to you a letter, a copy of a letter directing the sale. And as you can see from the letter, we did receive six bids today. We will be recommending the low bid from UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, at a 1.55%. This is a 10-year bond. It continues to remain low. It's about as low as you got last year. You had five-year bonds last year at a 1%, and this is right in the same neighborhood, because you are stretching these at 10%, or 10 years, I apologize. The, if you turn past the letter, I'll come back to that for the recommendation. But we did include the Moody's report. Bob did an excellent job on the phone with the Moody's representatives earlier in the month. And what I did was just highlight, they did reaffirm you at a very strong A1, which is a very good rating for a city. But I did highlight some of the strengths, some of the challenges that you faced. I wanted to point that out to you in the highlights. Please, at your leisure, take your time and read the report. Just a couple of areas, though, on page two. They are very happy with your financial conditions. You have very adequate reserve funds, and that's what they like. They like to have a nice reserve. They do warn you, don't spend your reserves for general operations. That is set aside for emergencies. Also, if you look on page three of the report, you will be paying off 92% of your bonds within 10 years. They like short bonds, Moody's, the shorter the better. And so 92% of all of your general obligation bonds will be paid off in 10 years. They did like that. The rest of the report is just the disclaimers about Moody's. If you turn to this page, it looks like this. This is the summary of the bids that we took today. As you can see, the low bid from UMB Bank of Kansas City. But notice that they really came in strong, because the next low is a 1.8% compared to the 1.55% that we got for the low bid. And that saves you about $23,000, if you do the math. On the right-hand column is the total cost of the bond issue over the 10 years. And even the high bid, actually, at a 193, isn't outrageous, but it does save you about $37,000. So it's a very nice market today. Six bids are very nice to receive on a $1.4 million bond sale. And then the very final sheet in the packet is your final debt service schedule. The right-hand column is your principal and interest payments that you will be paying over the next 10 years. With that, I would turn back to the cover letter and recommend that we sell $1,400,000 general obligation bond, Series 2016A, to UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, for a true interest rate of 1.5584% and at a price of $1,422,188.40. Let me explain that. You're getting more money than you're selling. They actually bid these bonds at a premium. A premium is when the investors want a little bit higher interest rate, but they're willing to pay upfront for that interest rate. So that all calculates into the low bid. And so at closing, instead of $1.4 million, you will be getting $1,422,000 at closing. With that, I would answer any questions that you would have about this bond issue.
Are there any questions for Larry or for Bob, either one? One of the issues we always talk about, at least as we go to League of Cities, when you do bond issues, you want to know what you're doing, what you're spending it for, and that's required now to be clear. And I think the information is all in the staff packet. So hats off to Bob and to Larry for a good job.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Resolution number 257, 2016, directing the sale of $500,000, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, taxable general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2016B. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 257, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Bob, go ahead again.
Thank you, Your Honor. Once again, I'll defer to Larry and tell you about the taxable bond sale.
Thank you, Bob, Mayor and Council, Larry Berger, again, Spear Financial. These are $500,000 in taxable general obligation bonds. The one I just reported on is tax-exempt, meaning that the investors who buy the bonds don't pay federal income tax on the interest that you pay them. These, because of the purpose of the bond issue, meaning what you're going to spend the money for, the bonding attorney has determined that you have to issue taxable. You can't use public money for private purposes and sell a tax-exempt bond for it. So that's why we determine that this $500,000 is a taxable issue. We sold it as a separate bid today. And as you can see, we had a lot of interest in this one. We had five bids, and we will be recommending the same, the same bank, UMB Bank of Kansas City, for a taxable interest rate of 1.6263%. I did include on the second page, I did not reprint the Moody's report. They did rate both of the bonds at the same time. They're both A1. But if you turn the page, we've got UMB as the low bid at $24,000 total cost, and the high bid of Hutchinson-Shaki early at $31,000, or a 2.1% bond, or interest rate. If you turn the last sheet, this is the final debt service schedule. The right-hand column, again, is your principal and interest. Now, these bonds are not callable, because they're so short. The first ones that I reported on, I did have a line in there. I apologize for not pointing that out. There is a call provision, meaning that after you get to the call, you can refinance them, you can pay them off, you can do whatever you want at your discretion. These are not callable, because they're so short. They're only five-year bonds. And so in conversation with Bob and our office, we decided not to have these callable, because they're so short. With that, I would turn back to the cover sheet and recommend that we sell $500,000 taxable general obligation notes, Series 2016B, to UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, for a price of $497,800, and a true interest rate of 1.6263%. Again, I would answer any questions that you would have.
Any questions? And I think, again, the staff summary gives a good breakout of what the money will be used for. Okay, thank you, Larry. We're ready to, unless there's a question, I didn't hear any. Let's go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 259, 2016, awarding the contract for the Phase 5, Division 3 Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 259, 2016.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Larry, you have the floor.
This project consists of lining the remaining sanitary sewer in the Richmond CSO Collection Basin area. The project area consists of two general areas. The first area is generally bounded by Chester Avenue on the south, Church on the east, the Oxbow on the north, and Ferry Street on the west. The second area is generally bound by Chester on the south, Kettle Creek on the west, Albee Road on the north, and then Ferry on the east. In this basin area, the city has already removed or is in process of removing the remaining biological load from the Oxbow area. This reduction is critical, since the Oxbow has a current TMDL designation. The project is listed on the intended use plan and is estimated at $1.6 million. This project was awarded an $800,000 Community Development Block grant. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on October 26, 2016, at 2:00 p.m. Thirteen sets of plans were distributed, and four bids were received. The low bidder is Municipal Pipe and Tool of Hudson, Iowa, in the amount of $1,340,013.45. The planned holders list and bid tab are attached.
Any questions for Larry? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Resolution number 261, 2016, approving the adjustment to total compensation for engineering services between the City of Atumwa and Garden Associates for the Harrows Branch and Memorial Park Water Quality Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 261, 2016.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Larry, go ahead.
The City of Atumwa entered into an agreement for professional services with Garden and Associates of Oskaloosa, Iowa, December 17, 2013, to provide engineering services that's associated with the Harrows Branch and Memorial Park Pond Quality, Water Quality Project. The scope of the work included preliminary design, final design, bid phase services, construction staking, and construction administration for the project sites as required. The Harrows Branch Memorial Park Water Quality Project is a DNR-sponsored project that encompasses four project sites in the area, Memorial Park and the City of Atumwa. These services were based on actual time spent on the project, with an estimated fee of $41,440, and are included in the SRF grant. The final grant amount was based on the final cost of the Phase 5, Division 2 of the Sewer Separation Project, which is the Richmond area. The city was awarded the State Revolving Fund grant for the watershed improvements and improving water quality in the Des Moines River. The goal of the project was to decrease the amount of sediment and associated pollutants reaching the river through the installation of best management practices and reducing the quantity of water reaching the river by increasing infiltration. You can see the original cost. One of the things that we've done, without going through this whole description, was we went back, we looked at different areas that we could possibly increase or move some of our best management practices to try to mitigate some of the concerns that some of the local citizens had when we started this project. This invoice of $4,265.44 will increase the total contract to Garden Associates to $51,017.59.
Any questions for Larry about this? Very straightforward. Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Resolution number 262, 2016, approving change order number two for Contract 2, Division 2, of the 2010 Flood Protection Mitigation Project, and accepting the work as final and complete. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 262, 2016.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Larry, go ahead.
Change order two extends the completion date of Contract 2, Division 2, of the 2010 Flood Mitigation Project, from August 1, 2015, to June 24, 2016. This change order is only being executed to satisfy FEMA for reimbursement of Contract 2, Division 2 quantities. This change order does not affect the contract amount.
Pretty straightforward again. Okay. No further questions, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Before we move on to ordinances, I'd like to circle back to Administrator Morris and ask him to make a couple additional comments under his reports that we kind of cut him off of. So Andy, you have the floor.
Not a problem, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick updates in terms of the reports from officers. One of them is, you'll see the note listed as Alliant Energy Franchise Tax Discussion. That is something that staff is going to recommend that we postpone. As some of you may or may not be aware, Alliant Energy is contemplating a rate increase that will be applicable, is my understanding, sometime in the spring of 2017. What staff is going to recommend to council, instead of instituting a franchise fee with a specific percent to it, at a date in the future, staff will be recommending the council to pass a franchise tax ordinance, but setting that rate at zero, not at 1%. Council can go back at a period of time later, and they can adjust that rate as they see fit. But again, staff will not be recommending a percentage differential increase in it at this time. The final item is the community meeting. As I've indicated to council members, I want to have one more community meeting before the end of the year. I have a tentative date picked as November the 10th. We need to pick a location, but we, I think, if my memory serves me, I think it's now time to rotate to find another facility on the south side of town. So if council members would give some thought to various locations on the south side of Atumwa, let me know, and we'll start working on that again. That would be on the 10th. And I believe we've set those meetings at, we had one at 6, we had one at 7. Let me determine a particular time, and I'll get back with council just as soon as I can.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, item I, ordinances, and we do have an individual that wants to speak to that.
Yeah. Ordinance number 3099, 2016, amending Chapter 7, entitled Animals and Fowl, by deleting Section 7.1, 7.4, 7.7, 7.12, 7.20, and 21.
Section 7.1, 7.4, 7.7, 7.12, 7.20, and 21, 7.24, 32, 33E, and F, 7.41, 42, 49, and 61, and inserting new Sections 7.1, 4, 7, 12, 20, 21, 24, 32, 33E, and F, 41, 42, 49, and 61 of the Municipal Code of the City of Atumwa, Iowa. Recommendation, pass the second consideration of Ordinance Number 3099, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, I think at this time we'll call up Bill Johnstone.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. I'd like to introduce my daughter's dog, Diesel. He's a 70-pound American Bulldog. He's licensed, vaccinated, collared, and leashed. Diesel is not a pet. Diesel is a useful tool against acts of aggression against my family, okay? And I will defend my family against any means of my disposal. 3:15 a.m., there's an individual stumbled down the side of the house past my daughter's bedroom window. Diesel alarms, sounds the alarm. He's released to the deck. The individual leaves. 2:08 a.m., we're warned for somebody close by. I leash Diesel. We exit the house. An individual standing beside my wife's van. He leaves the scene. 5 a.m., newspaper guy throws a newspaper in a wet morning, throws it in the house. He's met head-on with a 70-pound American Bulldog. One cold winter night, Diesel alarms for somebody in his comfort zone. An individual stumbled across the yard, obviously stayed far too long at the local saloon. Now, if I understand this code correctly, I've got some options here. I can take Diesel through no fault of his own and have him neutered. He suffers, I pay the bill. Or I can leave Diesel the way he was born, and again, I suffer because I have to pay the bill for increased fees. Now, this is kind of like the sewer fees that the citizens are paying in this town kind of crammed down our throats. You know, some of this has got to come to a halt because of half a dozen or so irresponsible citizens. Look at the nuisance ordinance. The doors there are still blocked, there's a police officer out in the hallway. Look at the chicken ordinance. How many people the city was upset with there? Four, five? Your gentleman here, Jeffrey, whatever his name was, that put on the goal-setting session, even made fun of us. That's a hell of a way to promote this city with codes like that. Now, let's lay out some hypothetical situations here. Let's say Ma and Paul Kettle retired on fixed income, kids is raised, gone. All he got's a dog. Okay, they can't afford to have this procedure done. What happens? The dog ends up in the Humane Society. Or the other side of the scenario, you have an individual, kids possibly, the pet, and this is a straw that breaks the camel's back. Maybe this becomes the Alamo. You want the dog, you come after the dog. So what happens? The police get involved, and there's a confrontation. Who's going to win there? Or somebody's going to just let the dog go loose. Maybe the dog will get hit. Or if this code goes on, it'll be enacted in a hard winter, and you know what's going to happen there. Somebody's going to take the dog out and dump him in the country. It's not going to fly. Let's get something done important here. The police department needs a canine unit. Why don't we work on things like that or an industrial park? A lot of citizens with stuff like this, causing a lot of grief, aggravation, and stress, they do not need. I appreciate your consideration, your time. With that, I yield back to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else on that particular? Okay, council, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are you ready to vote? Okay. All right, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 3104, 2016, reaffirming the minimum wage requirements set forth in Iowa Code Chapter 91D and rejecting the Wapalo County Iowa ordinance deviating from the provisions of Chapter 91D of the 2015 Code of Iowa. Recommendation, pass the first consideration of Ordinance Number 3104, 2016. Typo on the agenda, it is just to pass the first consideration.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a number of people who've asked to speak to this item, and I think in light of the number of people, I want to remind everybody that we'll give you three minutes to make your point, so get to the point and be specific and clear. And we'll start with Mark Chalgren.
Hello, Mayor, council. I'm State Senator Mark Chalgren. I live at 819 Hutchinson in Atumwa, Iowa. The reason I came forward today is to talk to you about the consideration of the increase in minimum wage in Wapalo County. And the reason I think it's pertinent is because as a state senator, both in the House of Representatives and the State Senate, this was discussed over the last two years. We had the benefit of the Legislative Services Agency, which is a nonpartisan agency, to evaluate this, quite a bit of resources at our disposal in order to consider it. During subcommittee and committee meetings, some of the discussion had to do with the economic development impact of raising the minimum wage for the entire state of Iowa, but also from the Department of Health and Human Services in discussing what the increase in the localized costs would be and the impact on those on a fixed income. And I think that probably had more impact on the legislators at the Capitol than pretty much any other discussion. And that was that if we increase the wages by approximately 40%, and you also consider the increased costs of energy, the increased costs of health care, then the inflationary factors that those who aren't a fixed income, who will not get an adjustment, will be impacted, would be great. Most people who are in a fixed income tended to be those who are disabled and elderly. They did not have the ability to overcome an increase in cost in food, in energy, in clothing, and in medicine in general. When the Republicans who control the House discussed this, they chose not to bring forward a bill to increase the minimum wage. And in the Senate side, controlled by the Democrats, they also chose not to bring a bill forward. So the legislature, with a lot of resources at hand from both chambers bicameraly, decided this was not in the best interest of Iowans at the time, this over the last two years. And I would encourage this council, city council, to not adopt what Wapalo County has done, because I don't believe Wapalo County supervisors had the same information that the legislators had. So thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, your honor. Councilmembers, administrator, attorney, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I will make every effort not to be redundant on the comments that I've made previously. I would, however, like to highlight some of those comments, that I believe that the supply and demand should drive the market employment, and that if any or few businesses actually hire anyone at minimum wage, I'm not even aware of who they are. Businesses must maintain a margin of profit in order to maintain their business. In order to do that, they have two choices: either to raise their prices or use less services by their employees with shorter hours. Atumwa has about 35% in retirees in our community, as the Senator just mentioned, and they are on fixed income and have little or no choice to recoup their expenses if minimum wage is increased. The $2.35, $2 an hour, that's just a figure I'm throwing out because I think the actual is higher than that. But at that rate, $2 an hour, the employer has to pay 35 cents minimum over that just to cover the cost of matching Social Security, unemployment compensation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all the other taxes that are required. If you had, and I'm not going to highlight this much, but if you had 10 employees and only raised their wages an additional $2 an hour, the employer would have an expense of $4,325 per month above and beyond their normal payroll. And I can tell you right now, having been a former employer in this community for over 50 years, there were times in my business when I had to go to the bank and borrow money to make my payroll. And if I had to do that today, I would simply do exactly what I did. I closed my business. I think we need to take that into consideration. That's not a threat, that's just a fact. We are, thankfully, a right-to-work state where you have the right to work at a job without joining a union if you choose to. That's an important feature in our state. That means you have freedom, freedom of choice. I believe this presentation by the county is a form of forced unionization in allowing the supervisors to dictate a local, then higher-than-state minimum wage, making the local merchants pay the dues. It's like Jesse James stealing from the rich and giving to the poor. Really? If you're under the impression that our local merchants are rich and in the poorest county in the state, I have a desert I'd like to sell you.
Okay, you've exceeded your three-minute limit, so I'm going to call your time and ask that you conclude.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Chris Lawson.
Good evening. My name is Chris Larson, and I'm an activist from here in Atumwa, Iowa. And I'm here to tell the truth, a truth that we all know. Prices have went up, inflation's went up, but people stuck at minimum wage at $7.25 an hour have been stuck there for over seven years now. Some of you I know, some of you I don't, some of you I went to high school with, some of you I worked with at John Deere, one of you was my fourth-grade teacher. But here's the thing. As Mark pointed out, you know, both houses opposed raising the minimum wage, but we have to look at the facts. Both houses are controlled by the people that pay to put them in there. They're not going to vote against their best interests. So that's not plausible. That's not a good reason to vote this down. For those of you who oppose this resolution, I would ask you, you live off $7.25 an hour. See how well you do. See if you can make your water bill. See if you can pay your cable bill. See if you can pay your rent or your mortgage. And I say to you, check your privilege, check your self-entitlement. For those of you who are on the fence, I implore you, and I appeal to you, to your sense of compassion. Think of these working poor. Think of these families that are struggling at $7.25 an hour. They're no less of a person than you. Just because they make a sandwich or do something that you probably wouldn't do, they're still human beings, and they deserve a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alex Stroda.
Thank you for the time. I'd like to address some facts. They've been discussed at the county level, but since this is the first reading, I think it's worth saying. According to the United Way Alice Report, which is an unbiased report based on expenses for people in Wapalo County, $8.45 an hour is required to meet the minimum expenses of living, and that is last year. According to the Iowa Policy Project, it is $9.60 an hour, and again, based on figures from last year. If you also consider that Atumwa proportionately has an incredibly high rate for renting, the cost of living in Atumwa is nearly unfeasible for the vast majority of people that are earning the minimum wage, because the vast majority of people that are earning the minimum wage, 68% according to the Alice Report, rent. They are paying around 40% of their monthly gross towards rent. They cannot survive. Beyond that, there's been an argument put forward that we should let the state do it. It's the state's job. That is exactly why the county supervisors made the decision they did. We are pressuring the state to act. They will not act without pressure. And finally, I'd like to point out that you're not actually opting out, as the couriers put forward. You are passing an amendment that lowers the minimum wage. The minimum wage in Wapalo County has been raised, and you have the choice to either do nothing, a dream for the average politician, because you don't have to do anything. You just let what has already happened, happen. Or you can vote to lower the minimum wage. Since I moved back to Atumwa after living overseas for eight years, I've been frequently dismayed, both by people outside of Atumwa who don't think very much of us, and by people inside Atumwa who say, "Have pride in Atumwa, have pride in Atumwa." But every time I ask them why, they don't seem to be able to give me a reason beyond just because. This is an opportunity for Atumwa to lead the way in the state of Iowa. We are in the league of Cedar Rapids and Iowa City and Des Moines. We're going to beat Des Moines to this. Atumwa does not often have the opportunity to beat Des Moines. We have the opportunity to infuse a sense of pride, a sense of destiny, for the young people and all people that are citizens of this town. That is, beyond the specific duties a city council holds, a very real opportunity that I think you, gentlemen, don't often have. And so I please ask you, do nothing. Let the minimum wage increase go through, as I believe Victor Strebe has proposed for at least a year, and then we'll reevaluate. There is no factual basis for an increase to inflation. Vote with the facts, not your feelings.
Steve Siegel.
Mayor, council members, citizens, thank you for the opportunity. As we've been hearing, in Wapalo County, a lot of people work very hard and receive very little money for it. We can do better by them. Tonight, I've heard the discussion about the sewer rates and how it's a mistake to let it go for several years without raising it, because then you've got to do a catch-up. That's where we are on the minimum wage. It's been let go. The legislature's been afraid to touch it. Hopefully, you won't be afraid to touch it. It's time to do something. I also heard about an electric increase and a franchise tax increase. How are these folks supposed to pay this on $7.25? As we've heard in the media, the governor is now open to at least discussing a minimum wage increase. Why is that? You think he just woke up one morning and said, "Why I think we ought to do that?" No. He's gotten pressure from Lynn, Polk, Johnson, and Wapalo Counties to take action. He didn't come up with this himself. I beseech you to let Year 1 of the ordinance go into effect, as Victor proposed at your last meeting about this, and then we can see the real impacts. It's not going to be businesses closing, it's going to be businesses growing and thriving because more people are going to have more money to spend in this community. You've raised the issue of enforcement. We are going to amend our ordinance to make it very clear that Wapalo County, not the city, will be totally responsible for the ordinance, enforcement of the ordinance, so that's not going to be a factor for you. In the last five years, there's been 20 state and local referendums on increasing, voter referendums on increasing the minimum wage. 18 of those have passed. I have no doubt it would pass here. How many folks in the audience tonight would like to see it pass? The vast majority. It's time for you to do the right thing, be on the right side of history, show some pride, vote this ordinance you're proposing down, and let ours go into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. John, is it McKeever? Sir John?
This is McCurley.
McCurley?
Yeah.
Thank you. Please step up.
Hello. My name is John McCurley. I'm a researcher at the University of Iowa Labor Center, which has been working on the minimum wage issue for several years. And I'm also speaking as a concerned citizen whose wife works in Etumwa and whose children have attended daycare here. So for over 20 years, social scientists have been researching the specific impact of state and local wage ordinances. Here's what they have found, over and over and over again. Overall, minimum wages like the one established by the Wapalo County Ordinance have a net positive effect on the low-wage employees who receive a wage increase. And they do not, let me repeat, do not produce any discernible impact on overall employment. Or inflation, for that matter. Again, you know, with all due respect to the legislative services, they're one body. This is 20 years of researchers across the United States. People who work hard and play by the rules are supposed to be able to support themselves. But in this low-wage Iowa economy, in which for decades, pay hasn't kept pace with increases in productivity, where have those increases in productivity gone? Right? They're going into somebody's pocket. They're not going into the pocket of low-wage workers. Hard work does not translate into basic needs. The Wapalo County Ordinance makes small inroads into righting this wrong. A 40-year, a four-decade-long wrong. I implore you to act in accordance with the best social science and with simple justice. If you can't or won't raise the wage above the one already established, don't act. Leave the county ordinance alone and let it do what similar ordinances have done all over the country for decades, improve the lives of the overwhelming majority of residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No, you may not, because we're gonna take the ones in order, and when we get through, we'll repeat. Pardon me? Yeah, we have it on. Okay. Thank you. Beatrice Guevara, 438 North Weller. Is she here? Okay. I believe it's James Michael Thomas, 405 and a half East Second, here in Etumwa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Yeah, I've heard many impassioned speeches in, for approving this minimum wage increase. But, and when I came here, there was a group protesting outside called something like, something about against poverty. But I wondered, do Indians actually live in poverty? I do. I know what it's like to not be able to struggle to make ends meet. If I was any poorer, I'd be homeless. And the thing is, I am against raising minimum wage, because I know it'll make harder for, it harder for the people like me that are struggling. Like, the city of Etumwa has one of the hardest-struggling economies in the city. The only way that employers will be able to afford that increased minimum wage is to raise prices and lay people off, which will increase unemployment. And, you know, there'll probably be several businesses that'll have to go out of business. And it'll be next to impossible to get new businesses to relocate or locate here in Etumwa when they can go to a neighboring county and get employees for a fraction of the cost. You know, and, and then it won't help the people that do have jobs, because the prices will go up, so that will compensate for any increase in wages. And then what about the people like me who are living on a fixed income? The elderly and disabled. We don't get raises half the time. Now, this month, I was really hard up. I had to pawn some cherished possessions so I could afford food. I can't afford an increase in food prices that will come with raising the minimum wage. And most of my family can't. Most of my friends are disabled and on a fixed income. They can't afford it either. And I urge you to, you know, this, this is touted as an effort to help the poor, but it'll just hurt the poor. And I urge you to resist or to do it against raising minimum wage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Amborn, 11147 Sixtieth Avenue, here in Etumwa. Hello. I'm Wapalo County. I was born here, 75 years, had seven kids here. And I just am astounded that, that we cannot care anymore for people that don't have enough to live on. I see Seattle is moving their wages up. They said business is better. They're not having any problems there with it. And I think Iowa is stuck in the mud, and the politics are need-stricken out. I did work at John Deere, and I now have a small farm. And when somebody comes to work for me, I either give them $10 starting out and $15 if they stay, because I know the national poverty level is $15.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else that wants to address this item? Okay, I'd like to then open it to the council. I think, Andy, you wanna make some introductory comments?
Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate what I recommended to council on both the 11th and 18th of this month, and that is, the recommendation from staff is to opt out of the county's minimum wage.
Okay, are there any council comments?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a comment if nobody else does. Certainly would give anybody else the opportunity to go, go ahead of me. The last time I made this, I'll try to keep it brief, too. The last time I made this attempt, those in the media called it halting and stumbling. So this time, I put that into a written statement here, which I'll read. And then at the conclusion of that, Your Honor, I would yield back my time. I think most of you know I am in support of this ordinance the supervisors have proposed and have been. And I'll go ahead and read my statement here. It says, "Since before I have began my duties as council member, I have supported a living wage ordinance. I believe it is government's role to extend and provide opportunities for both business and individuals that contribute to the economic well-being of our community. It is not government's role to set arbitrarily high wages that damage small and local businesses. I believe business should have the ability to set their own wages based on the merits of their employees and also employees should decide their success or failure. However, I do not believe a starting or training wage, as we called it, is justification for a sub-survivable or sub-livable wage. I also believe that the livable wage model provides only what's needed for employees working full-time to achieve this livable threshold. And I have heard from most all who have addressed the council that $7.25 an hour is not a livable or a survivable wage. And I think that's something we can all agree on. Small business, large business, and all residents involved in this issue, and it's a very sensitive one, can agree. You cannot survive on $7.25 an hour." Now, the ordinance that the Wapalo County Supervisors have proposed is within 50 cents of what the Massachusetts Institute of Technology has deemed a year ago as the livable wage, the wage that it needed around here to survive. And that is, like I said, using year-old data. So by the time the three-year step increase takes place, I believe that will be pretty close to where it's needed for a livable wage in Wapalo County. So we've heard here tonight from our own council that we are looking at increases in the future for not only our utilities. Could be up to 10%. We've heard that there are seniors out there on fixed incomes. So it sounds like that, you know, we have a job to do. The job in front of us is to extend that arm of opportunity, not a handout, but opportunity, so folks in our community don't become homeless, so that they can survive and work and continue to improve their lifestyle. Certainly, it would be better, and I think we all agree, that the state would pass something to increase that wage. And I believe they will eventually. And I think that, in time, this is not a permanent thing. We could, you know, supervisors may default to the state wage if they raise it. I think certainly one of the things of any legislator on a local level, supervisor, state, or whatever, if we make ordinances or legislation that isn't correct or right, sometimes we make mistakes, we can always change them. I think the supervisors have made that very clear today, that there may be changes that may need to be made to this ordinance that may make it better for the people. So it's not a one-size-fits-all ordinance. I think they've made, you know, strides in saying that it can be changed if it needs to be. So if we let this ordinance take effect and do nothing, the city has no enforcement issues, as we see here that it would be a massive problem on the city level. I think if we get involved in this and change it, so rightly as our city attorney has said, we're gonna face massive issues, and we have no staff or manpower to do that. That's the wrong move, I believe. And I think we've heard that most employers do pay above the minimum wage, and hats off to them for doing the right thing. And so finally, I'll cut it short and say, you know, when I was elected, we, we were sworn to represent everybody in a community, not the 12% of businesses, small or, or large. We were, we were elected to represent everybody, individuals, individual workers, individual workers making minimum wage, making livable wages and making high wages, everyone in the community, even businesses. And so I think if we do nothing and let this ordinance take effect, the rising tide raises all ships. And I think that's something I am prepared to do, is to, to vote no on this recommendation. But ultimately, the, the decision of the council as a whole will be one that we will support. Thank you for your time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any other councilmen?
Well, much like Matt, I also prepared a little bit of a written statement. The Iowa Constitution, Article 3, Section 39A states, "Counties or joint county municipal corporation governments are granted home rule power and authority not inconsistent with the laws of the General Assembly to determine their local affairs in government." Iowa Labor Commissioner Michael Morrow, I think that's how you pronounce his name, has went on to record as saying that a county adopted minimum wage ordinance would be inconsistent with state law and thus would be unconstitutional. Attorneys throughout the state have argued whether he is right or wrong, and the issue will likely go to the State Supreme Court for a ruling, if and when it is challenged. There are already entities who have stated that they plan to challenge the legality of county minimum wages. We've heard people say that we have to do something because the state won't do anything. Governor Branstad has publicly stated that he intends to introduce a preemptive action with the Iowa Legislature in the 2017 session to stop counties from moving from Iowa's minimum wage. In the event that preemptive action is taken, this ordinance could be reversed. Then we're back to square one, and a lot of resources have been utilized for naught. As to citizen complaints that Etumwa does not have the authority to move away from the county's ordinance, Section 3 of the Wapalo County Minimum Wage Ordinance outlines that this specifically does not apply to any municipality that has adopted a conflicted ordinance in adherence with Iowa's home rule. I'd like to point out, however, that I still do not believe that Wapalo County has adopted an ordinance that is consistent with the laws of the General Assembly and would therefore be unconstitutional under Iowa state law. We still have no enforcement mechanism in place. We still have no solid answers as it pertains to youth workers. We still have not heard whether this is even legal. If we cast a vote to accept this ordinance or any variance of it, knowing that they're unknowns to its legality, then we, as a council, have failed to do our due diligence, and thus we have failed to do our jobs. So I would, I would not be in favor of passing this ordinance.
Are there other? Councilman Myers?
Yes. Yes, Mayor, I would speak to this issue. And, and I think anybody out in the audience, and most people know, my first comment to this issue would be that it is clearly a legislative issue, not only at the state level, but also at the federal level. I would also point out that since the county started, I guess, involving us in some, some meetings, even though each of those meetings was an actual vote, it, it also, even though they supposedly were involving, involving us, it's an extremely complex issue. So you can step forward and you can say, "Oh, no, you just can do nothing, and that's the best thing to do." But that is not correct. I would say that both federal and state, one reason for what appears to be inaction is how extremely difficult an issue it is. The economy on one side, if you, if you, in fact, can't make it as a business, or if you make it, but you lay off people. The other side of it is, as the gentleman pointed out, the other side of it is, "Or you raise it too much, now I'm in real trouble." So, so there's, again, to me, it's the legislative thing. But I guess, as Matt, as Councilman Dalby pointed out, you know, I think we all mentioned when we were elected that one of our major things was to promote economic development. Promote economic development, to me, is to thank you, and I don't know about the 12%, but to thank you all of the businesses in this town, large and small, who work extremely hard to employ people. And by the way, I also noticed, as I drive around town, the number of businesses that have, have help-wanted signs out, now hiring and cannot find people to work. So, so again, I would applaud the employers and the businesses who do provide working jobs for people in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor?
I'd like to reiterate the idea that I had that I spoke about at the special meeting that happened a couple of weeks ago and, and what I said on the radio show on Friday. What I'm hearing is that if we go with the supervisor's recommendation, that the argument is, is that it's perceived that we don't support businesses, and nothing could be further from the truth. Every councilman up here supports our local businesses. It's a, it's a two-pronged approach. We want to attract new businesses, and we want to retain the ones that we have here in Etumwa. So I absolutely, fully support our businesses. From what I've understood and from what I hear, many of our businesses, in fact, I haven't heard of one of them that does pay $7.25 an hour right now. So a sub-argument of that is that those businesses wouldn't be affected by $0.95, which is my idea. It's not a three-steps-forward sign on the dotted line. It's the one step. And let's take a look at the impact of that, the economic impact of that after a year. So the other thing is, is that if there are businesses that are paying $7.25 an hour, that gives those entities an opportunity to figure out how they would potentially deal with a state legislation that might double or triple that number. And they would need to know what measures they need to take to survive as a business. If it impacts them at $0.95, what is it gonna impact them if the state comes in and says it's $10.50 an hour? So they would have experience with that lower figure. So again, I've said it before, I'm not supportive of a, a three-year increase incrementally, but I am supportive of a first-year increase of $0.95. And as we've heard, that would be measured, and we would be able to make future decisions based on the outcomes of that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Has everybody had a chance to speak?
I'm not gonna repeat everything that we've said up here. I agree with you folks that said it should be statewide. I wholly agree with that. I, I don't like the idea of being hodgepodge all over the state, different counties, different things. They tell me that one city is bordering three counties, which doesn't have anything to do with us, but that seems like a nightmare to me. And that's why I say I wanna see the state act on this. I think that's the right thing to do. Another concern that I have is some counties exempted students from this. I don't know all the details. Other counties exempted waitresses. They make two or three bucks an hour, but their tips take them over the top of the $10.20 or whatever the minimum wage happens to be. There's been no discussion on that. I, another issue that I have is for the nonprofits. For instance, 10 Co. For instance, TenCo Industries, what's this going to do to them? I have concerns with some of these nonprofits, that what it might do for them. Maybe they could be adjusted a little bit to keep their footing and keep their people employed. So I'm hoping the state will take a look at this. I, I just, I'm sorry, I can't support it the way it's hodgepodge. I wish we'd have had a committee early on that studied this and reported back like some of the other counties did, and we didn't have that. At this point in time, I can't support it, I'm sorry.
Are there any other comments anybody wants to make from the council? Okay, the motion then, on the floor, is to pass the first consideration and adopt ordinance Thank you for that correction. Pass first consideration of the ordinance 3104, 2016. Are you ready to vote? Okay, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
No.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
I've got to have a clarification. What are we doing here?
Just passing the first consideration of 3104 to reaffirm, or reaffirming the minimum wage requirements set forth in Iowa Code Chapter 91D, which is going to opt out of the county ordinance.
Okay, tell me what the vote is again.
We have Dalby no, Myers yes, and Rowe yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
No.
Motion carried.
The next item is public forum. Is there anyone that wants to address the council on something that was not on the agenda Seeing none. I think we do have one further piece of business. Councilman Rowe, are you prepared?
Sure. Tonight, we'd like to acknowledge a personal accomplishment last month of one of our city councilmen. Victor Strebe's time is normally reserved for his wife and two small children, his full teaching schedule at Indian Hills Community College, representing us on the city council, and coaching the Indian Hills Disc Golf Team. Two weeks ago, he found the time to compete in the Atumwa Fall Golf, or Classic Disc Golf Tournament. This was a PDGA-sanctioned tournament. He won the Advanced Master Division. This was his first PDGA win. As a coach of the Indian Hills Disc Golf, he has shared many Hills National Qualifier Tournament victories, and this year, they were second in the nation, beating 86 of the 87 college teams at the National Collegiate Disc Golf Championships in South Carolina in April. Their only loss was to the home team there, the University of Georgia. Many disc golfers never get a chance to win a division of a sanctioned tournament. Congratulations, and we wish you many more wins in the future.
This probably requires a speech.
I didn't play very well, but I played better than the other guys that were in my division. But it, it was nice to get out and play and see a lot of the great mentors and people in the sport that I've learned a lot from, and a lot of our players, and it's just a great community of disc golfers. And I'd like to thank Bob Kramer, and Dave Cecil, and Tom Kramer, and all of the legends that, that have paved the way for the rest of us who are trying to learn more about the sport. Thank you.
Very nice, Victor, and we certainly appreciate your work with the Indian Hills students, and I know you've driven a lot of miles to play in a lot of tournaments, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Again, the, the other comment, I know it's in your packet, but for the public, I want to again compliment Bob J. for the excellent report from Moody's, and that's available to anybody that wants to see it. I think, as you heard from Larry Spear, we're doing a good job of taking good care of the taxpayer dollar, and we want to continue that. So thanks, Bob, we appreciate that. Anything else for the good of the council tonight? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
And I have 724.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That's why I looked at...